Hello, everyone. It's May 16th. I'd like to call this special meeting an executive session to order. May I have a motion to go into executive session? Sarah moves, Mike seconds. All in favor? Thank you. Good evening, everyone. I'd like to call this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen to order on May 16th at 7:35. Would everyone please join me from the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The first item on the agenda is the First Selectmen's Report. We have a pretty busy evening tonight, so I'm going to keep this on the shorter side. On COVID, the weekly positivity rate as of last Wednesday was 11.84 percent. This mirrors the state numbers and is the highest number since January. There were increases in every age group with the largest in the under-12 population, but fortunately hospitalizations still remain low. On Great Island, I continue to research all facets of this property, including but not limited to funding and possible uses. Meetings are being held regularly, and I hope to provide more information in the near future. On the budget, last Monday, the RTM voted to pass the Board of Finance budget. I want to thank everyone who worked diligently over many, many months to secure a fiscally responsible budget. Department heads, my fellow Board of Selectmen members, Board of Finance, the RTM, F&amp;B Committee, and in particular, I want to recognize Kate Bush and Jen Trineski for their support during budget season. Metro North, I'm on a West Cog Committee tasked with assessing noise abatement, a quiet zone. We met last Monday to conduct interviews with companies, and we are reviewing proposals and references now for that. That's a noise abatement study for the trains over by Tom Machell. Adventure Day was Sunday. It was really terrific. It was two sessions. I attended. I think there were 1,000 people there, for real. This was something between Francis Selig Woods, the town, and the Darien Land Trust. I want to give a very big thank you to Pam Gary, our Director of Public Works, who worked on this. Memorial Day Parade will be happening. It's scheduled for Memorial Day, May 30th. The Monuments and Ceremonies Commission is taking the lead on this again. Everybody will gather at 10 o'clock at Goodwives, as we have in the past, and we will begin marching down Post Road to Spring Grove. I want to give a heads up that we requested a flyover of a C-130 jet that John Zagrosky will be flying. Actually, just kidding on that. But you can expect to hear the noise of this, and we've had people ask us in the past what's going on, so that's what you will be hearing.
If that happens, I would recommend an evacuation.
And if you look up, if you're at the end of the parade and you look up at the very end, the pilot will tip his wing in honor of our fallen heroes that are in our cemetery that we will be meeting at. So I invite you to join us, the Board of Selectmen, and I hope to see you out there with your red, white, and blue. Post 53 will also be doing a food fair that day from 11 to 2, so I hope you come hungry and you can support them. Kate?
Nothing tonight.
Nothing tonight. Do we have any public comment?
We did have, and I don't have the mic.
Oh, wait. I jumped. Sorry. I jumped. Going to come back to that.
Okay.
Board Liaison Reports. Do any of the Board of Selectmen have any reports? Michael?
I agree.
I do not this evening.
No?
No.
Okay. Sarah?
Thriving Youth is meeting this Thursday, so I will have a date after that, and the Henley Homes and Royal Building Committee is here tonight, and we are excited because we've chosen an architect, KG and Dee, which we're excited about. So we'll tell you more about that in a few.
Okay.
Thank you.
Chuck?
IT Committee meets Thursday. I'll have more at the next meeting.
Next meeting. Okay. Sarah?
Marcy.
Marcy?
Yeah. Ox Ridge Building Committee met last week on Wednesday, and I'm happy to report the academic wing is 93 percent complete. They did some beautiful pictures of the courtyard, which is just fantastic, the kind of outside space, and the landscape area, which just turned out to be beautiful. They are currently on budget, which is great. Supply chain issues, still always a concern, and they've got their eyes on it. There are some switches that are going to be imperative to make sure that they have in to get all the digital work done, but they're not sure if they're going to get. So they have been able to get their hands on some used switches in the time being so that we'll be able to get sort of the ABA and audiovisual stuff up and working for the kids to get into school in September. You know, they have about a week period of time from the time the teachers and the students are out, the time they demo the Ox Ridge current building, so it's going to be kind of an intense last end of week for a lot of those teachers, administrators, but we can trust that those administrators will get it done, and the demo will happen, I believe it's been 23rd or 24th of June. So, all good stuff happening there.
93 percent, huh?
93 percent.
Going to come back to you on how they came up with that. That's very, very specific. Are there any comments from the public joining us this evening? Sure. Come on up. So please begin by giving us your name and your address. Thank you.
Hi, good evening. My name is Amanda Craig. I'm at 34 Delafield Island Road. I have a kindergartner at Token Eek and a seventh grader at the middle school. I'm also a licensed marriage and family therapist on 1051 Post Road, serving our community. So, of course, the Silver Hill project is really important to me. Love Silver Hill. I'll start out with that and some of the questions I hope they address tonight. Do they have a host of providers that will see people after the assessment in person? How long will this, how will this be a long-term mental health solution for our community, especially after the funding? And have we asked families what they believe they need? Last week alone, I had a 13-year-old for depression call. I had a family with alcohol problems seeking therapy. I had a wife who wants to leave her husband. I had a mom overwhelmed with parenting. I had adults feeling sad. I had three teenagers going through a divorce with their parents. I had a teenager feeling so sad after a breakup with her boyfriend. I had school stress and overwhelmed. I had, what do I do with my daughter who is talking about being gay? I had a couple fighting, and I had a couple trying to decide whether to divorce. I want to make sure that we have funds for people who know they need therapy and a place for them to go. I'd like that our community has psychiatric services available for medication management, and I hope that funds are available for those initiatives as well, because we have a lot of people suffering outside a crisis. And finally, I'll say, we all have mental health. If we don't care for ourselves and our community and our families, we will all become mentally ill, and we will all need emergency assessments. This decision needs to be made carefully because of the suffering that's going on, that we need to prevent and intervene. So I hope that we can catch this early and keep that in mind as we hear this report coming forth. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Hi, I'll be quick. I wanted to mirror that, you know, Silver Hill thing very highly. Wendy Ward, 67 Deepwood. I'm also a founder of a mental health screening company, so I'm all on board for having a program here in town. Most of you know me. I just wanted to say that half of all lifetime conditions of mental health actually show signs and symptoms before the age of 14. So looking at a program that would be 14 and older can ultimately have its short-sighted end. Solutions, what, as Amanda just listed, we have to get to root causes, so going after acute care only and then not necessarily having a fully-vetted program for anything beyond acute can do two things. It can leave families more frustrated because now they know they have a bigger problem, and it's much harder to go out into the world and find mental health solutions than, I mean, we all know that there's a shortage of therapists. Therapists are also, as you heard, struggling as well. So I really believe that we should be putting together a committee. I hate to say that because I know they can weigh things down, but a rushed solution is a short-sighted solution. I would love to see us help families, again, not depleting them more with information that they can't do anything with. Services for loss and grief, services for bullying, services for anxiety and depression are all very different, so we need to be able to help families get to what they need to. Secondly, if we're only ever solving acute care, we sort of feed the stigma, because then mental health is a really scary conversation because it's always acute. So early intervention, decades of research show, early intervention starts before the problem is in crisis, and I just would like to see us add components to the program that are bigger and more well-rounded. It's a lot of money. I think it can do a lot of good, and I'm glad you're trying to do something. I just would like to see us work closer together with more people in town, maybe put out an RFP and talk to more services. Thank you. But totally supportive.
Thank you. Thank you, Wendy. Are there any other comments? Patty?
Patty Baumgartner. I just wanted to say-
Address.
Can you hear me?
Address.
Oh. 64 Hanson Road. I just wanted to, I'm listening to you all, and I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to say thank you to Darien Parks and Rec and Pam Gary. We worked on, the community-funded Darien did a Mission Possible 2022 program that we did this weekend. It was pushed back from a month ago after the tragedies happened. And so I just want to report that we had 25 teams of kids, parents, women playing together, groups playing. It was such a positive thing. We had missions in every park, in every beach. We had missions in all our sponsors, as Ally knows. We had five missions where we did it for charity, and they dropped off things, and so Human Resources, Human Services getting some of that. And so I echo what everyone, and Amanda Craig, I don't know you, but you are a clue. And our first life woman was a clue too. Who is your leader? But my point is, we can also do, continue to do more positive things in town. I got more emails last night at 9 o'clock at night from people I didn't even know, because they found out I had been involved in it, and they said, this was the best thing we've done all year. We needed it for our kids right now. We needed it for my husband. We needed it for our family. So let's continue to do that, and I thank you all for your hard work. Appreciate it.
Thank you. Anybody else from the audience? Kate, do we have anybody?
We had an email from Amy Zerbi asking questions related to the Silver Hill that you should all have received.
Okay. So Dr. Gerber, Dr. Andrew Gerber is here today with Rick Markello, and I thought first I'd just give you a little background. So Kevin Murnahan, who's the First Selectman of New Canaan, reached out to me back in February and brought this idea forward of crisis kind of assessment being looked at on the New Canaan side in working with Silver Hill. So he thought that this might be something that Darien might want to consider. So myself, Ally, Ramstack are head of Human Services, and David Knoff and I went over to Silver Hill, and we had one meeting there. We then invited Silver Hill to come here, and they spoke to Ally, to myself, to David, to Chief Anderson, and to Dr. Adley, and to Kate Bush, our town administrator. And the support there from these individuals led us, led me to believe that this would be something that should be brought before the Board of Selectmen. This is a brand-new initiative, you know, something that's totally new for us. So what I'm hoping tonight is that we will have a presentation, and I think that a lot of the questions that people have are questions that will be addressed, and if they're not, please reach out to us or directly to Dr. Gerber if he's receptive to that. So I would like to invite you to give the presentation, and then we will open it up to any questions that anybody has. And I thank you for joining us.
Thanks so much for having me. Would it be helpful for me to put slides up?
Sure. I think it'd be great.
I have a shame on him here, so I can plug in. Is it the moment of truth when you see if the technology actually works or not? See it up there. Is that, is that okay?
We have it on the-
So I'm going to speak relatively briefly tonight. First of all, thank you for inviting me. Thank you for having me here. I do want to introduce two of my team members who are here with me. You mentioned Rick Markello is our Chief Financial Officer, and also with us is the Director of this program, which has been approved by New Canaan, and she happens to be a Darien resident, Suzanne Lewis. And we're very, very fortunate to have Suzanne, so thank you for lending us, lending her to us, even though we're in New Canaan. The starting of this presentation is unfortunately a sad one, but one that I think that so many of you are aware of and the speakers earlier already addressed. We're in a time of unprecedented mental health need in the country, in the world, and certainly also here in Fairfield County. There are many reasons for that. Even prior to the pandemic, it was clear that mental health in this country had not been or has not been addressed in the way that our citizens need. At this point, one in 20 individuals or adults in this country suffers from a severe mental illness. One in five suffers from any mental illness, and at this point, 17 percent of youth, this is even prior to the pandemic, have an experience of mental health disorder. So these are really high numbers. This tells you something about the distress. For many, many years, talking about mental health, mental illness was such a taboo that we, I think, had undercounted it. Families kept this private and secret, thought they were the only ones. And what we know now is that every family is affected in some way, whether it be a direct member or someone close to them. And so I believe and I hope that we are talking more about it. When the pandemic hit in 2020, it became clear that we were in for an even rougher ride, and the statistics that have been gathered even over the last two years have shown that our impressions are in fact accurate, that there's been a sharp increase in the number of individuals, really of all ages, who have suffered from mental difficulties. Just to show you some data from the Kaiser Family Foundation, in January to June of 2019, a poll showed that 11 percent of adults reported symptoms of anxiety disorders or depressive disorders. That same number, only two years later, in January 2021, showed that 41 percent of adults. If you look at the age distribution, young adults, 18 to 24 years old, have the highest rate, which isn't to say that other age ranges don't also suffer, but young adults in particular, for a variety of reasons that we could probably all speculate on, are suffering. Individuals who work on the front lines, those are the people who are policemen, firefighters, our ambulance drivers, our nurses, our doctors in the emergency rooms also have suffered disproportionately, and families where there are young children have also suffered at some of the highest rates. Again, I wish I could say that this was a surprise to any of us. It is not. We know that we are in a time of crisis, and with the current status of COVID infections, as the First Selectmen already reported, there is no end in sight right now. This is all very, very frightening and very worrisome for those in the profession as I am and as my colleagues at Silver Hill. By the way, I should have mentioned earlier that I'm the President and Medical Director at Silver Hill, and trained as a psychiatrist as well as a child mental health psychiatrist. So there has been a lot written, speculated on, opined about how our mental health system has failed us, and it can feel very overwhelming in time to think about all the ways our mental health system is broken right now. Of course, one can't solve the whole problem in one effort, but when we started conversations with the Town of New Canaan, we were focused on a particular issue that we hear about every day at Silver Hill and that many of our constituents come to us. You asked a very good question, or someone asked a very good question earlier, do we ask families? And in fact, one of the things that's very important to us, in addition to our daily conversations with families at Silver Hill, is we have a Patient and Family Advisory Committee who we consult regularly and ask them the exact question that was referred to earlier. What do you need most? How can we be most helpful to you now? And one of the things that we hear over and over again is that even in an area that has a relatively large number of providers, therapists, counselors, psychiatrists, it is hard to get in. And why is it hard? Because people are full. Their practices don't have openings, and when you call for an appointment, you get told it's three weeks, four weeks, months sometimes, depending on the field that you're pursuing. And the issues that people come to wanting therapy for, marriage counseling or psychiatry, are not the types of issues as you might imagine that people can or want to wait for that period. Sometimes the person affected is motivated. Sometimes there's a crisis that needs to be dealt with, and the option of waiting a long time is just not on the table. What we are trying to avoid is exactly what one of the earlier speakers mentioned, which is this notion that the only way to solve a problem is to wait until it's so acute that you need to go to a hospital. And just for definitional purposes, when I use the word acute, I'm referring to something that would drive you to an emergency room, something that would drive you to need hospitalization. That's what we want to avoid. We've seen those numbers skyrocketing over the last two years with the pandemic. All the emergency rooms, all the inpatient facilities, including Silver Hill, are seeing that number much higher than we want it to be. So we want to intervene earlier. We want to intervene, and this is why we use the word urgent as opposed to crisis or acute. We want to intervene when somebody says, I want help. I don't need to go to the emergency room. It's not at the crisis level yet, but I also don't want to wait three, four, five, or more weeks until I can get an appointment with a psychiatrist or therapist in town. So that's really what we're trying to address here. One of the things we also hear very frequently is, I don't know where to go. I don't know who to talk to. I can go online and do a Google search. That's not an appropriate way to find somebody who's going to be so important in my life. All the therapists, all the counseling centers look the same. I call them, they won't take me. How do I have an expert opinion of what to do? And for that, we hope we have something that we can offer. Silver Hill has been in New Canaan for 91 years. We're one of a small number of private, not-for-profit psychiatric hospitals in this country that I believe have the level of expertise to do these assessments expertly and quickly. Of course, there's a challenge in that, and that is that Silver Hill, like any business, has to have an organization that's willing to fund these assessments. And as probably we've all had the experience, using one's insurance only to fund these kinds of assessments can be very challenging. Most of us, even with good insurance, have high deductibles, have high copays, and most of the places we would want to go to get the highest quality care either don't take our insurance and charge only privately, or we get so bogged down in getting appropriate approvals and so on that these are major obstacles in order to get the kinds of care we need. So the proposal that emerged in collaboration with the Town of New Canaan was to create an urgent care service that would hold a certain number of spots and would be free to the residents of New Canaan. Now, that wouldn't mean, that doesn't mean we wouldn't charge the insurance companies, but we know from experience and we've known for 91 years that you only get a certain percentage of what you bill the insurance companies for. So the idea would be that we would bill in every case of a patient who has insurance, but that we can predict fairly well, and we would certainly keep track of this, how much the shortfall would be. And we would make up for that with a grant from the town. And so New Canaan at the time had ARPA funds that they were interested in spending in this way, and so together with a consultant, Blair McLaughlin, who's very experienced in the state of Connecticut, with our Chief Financial Officer, Markello, and a team of us, we created a proposal that would enable us to offer these free, this service free, an urgent assessment to anybody from New Canaan who came. Now, there are unknowns. I want to be very honest about that. We don't know how many people will come, and on the one hand, we want as many slots open as possible. On the other, it would be very expensive to hire all the psychiatrists and all the therapists we would need to have that many slots. So we, through much discussion, decided to create at least an initial budget that offered five slots per week. And what that means is, for those five slots, and each one we budgeted for three hours, and including an hour time with a psychiatrist, as well as time for sort of assisting, you know, mental health professionals, including social workers and, if necessary, nurses. Each one of those blocks would be reserved with the idea that patients who called, or families who called, or even the school who called, could reserve one of those slots, and within, the plan is within 48 hours of a call, could be scheduled, if appropriate, to come in for that urgent assessment. Of course, there are unknowns. We don't know what the demand is going to be, and we will have to figure that out as we go. This is our best guess early on. New Canaan decided early on that even though they wanted to have five slots because they wanted essentially the optionality in order to fill those, they wanted a partner and then approached you and approached Darien as a partner. We are not, at this time, considering other partners in this, because the first year really would be a trial, a test of whether this system can meet the needs of these two towns and can also afford, essentially, to provide the kinds of assessments we want. I do want to clarify a couple of things, just because they came up earlier. Even though Silver Hill is a hospital, this is not designed for acute care only. This is designed actually for what we call urgent care, which means people who want to come in soon, but not people who need necessarily to go to the hospital or need to go to an emergency room. We would obviously do an assessment to see that. The other thing to mention is even though our current services that we offer, that is our residential and outpatient and inpatient start at 14, this assessment service would take everybody. It would not be restricted by age at all. People who are child psychiatrists are licensed to see people of any age. So that is the current status of the plan. We hope to address some of these urgent needs in the local towns. There's a lot we would have to learn. We plan to staff the phones 12 hours a day, six days a week. As I mentioned, these five slots per week, each one three hours. We will need to partner with everybody in the area. Already, we've worked with the Town of New Canaan, and fortunately, some of the work that has already been done by the New Canaan Community Foundation was to compile lists of services and actually to bring many of these together. This was right before COVID. Lauren Patterson, who runs the New Canaan Community Foundation, did a lot of work on this, and we have, we estimate between 75 and 80 different providers or services that we've identified already available in New Canaan. I imagine Darien has a similar number, and one of the things we would have to do, obviously, if we did extend this and work with you as well, would be to create similar lists and partner similarly with folks here in Darien to do it. In addition to partnering with the local services, we're also partnering with the town, and that includes Health and Human Services, Youth and Family Services, Adult and Senior Services, the schools, the Community Foundation, the Parent Support Group, and then a few other organizations that are located in New Canaan, including Waveney Life Care, which as you know is a senior living, a home, a nursing home, Kids in Crisis, and the Lighthouse, which is a sober living facility. I won't go through all the numbers in the budget unless people ask, or I'll ask our Chief Financial Officer to address any questions that come up, but I'll just summarize by saying, this is not, we're nonprofit. This is not designed to make anybody money. This is designed to break even. And really, the goal is to use the money to staff up so that we have the psychiatrists and social workers and the nurses available to fill those five slots per week, to do those assessments, and to make sure that everybody not only gets a great assessment, but also has a chance for a warm handoff. And that's a phrase that we use in our business, may be familiar with, to say that it's not enough to give somebody the name or phone number on a piece of paper and say, you've got an appointment next week or call this number. That is a direct contact between our clinicians doing the assessment and those who are receiving the patient and who have plans to see them in whatever amount of time is appropriate. We do this all the time with our patients. We were very- We were very well-connected. I know people sometimes say things like, but there's nobody available. And I think that's often the experience if you're new to this or if you're calling people you don't know. But when you have existing partnerships, which we do, that is not our experience, that we are able to find people who will take our patients, particularly when they've already had a comprehensive assessment, which is very often the kind of entry point where somebody knows enough about the patient that they're willing to then accept them into their practice. There's a lot to be figured out, and we would measure this all the way. So one of the things that we're building into the plan from the start is key performance indicators, KPIs, and outcome measures. We're going to need to know what the average response time from a call to an in-person visit, what the time between an assessment and a follow-up appointment with an outpatient provider, the percentage of patients accepting the warm handoff, either to the New Canaan Human Resources, when we were writing this, that was our main partner, but whoever in Darien we would work with as well, and the time to the response, patient satisfaction, patient well-being, the effect of the program, and ultimately following up with people at least 30 days afterwards. And we would have a committee structure that would be designed to review these measures regularly. So I'll stop there. Hopefully, I've given you an overview of what we are hoping to do. But of course, like anything, particularly in these tough times, it can only be done in partnership. And my hope is that Silver Hill, and that we're located in New Canaan, we want to be partners with you. We've already got a plan to partner with the town of New Canaan, and I think this is such an important area that it would be a privilege to partner with Darien as well. Thank you.
So Dr. Gerber, could you go through a couple of things that I think the audience will want to know? One is, on my side, when I first learned about this, this was, you know, combination with New Canaan and Darien, and instead of increasing the number of spaces per week, when we join, it will be a two-year program instead of a one-year program. So I'm wondering how, with the addition of another town, why the number of spaces hasn't increased?
So I'll tell you the thinking about this. A lot of thought and conversation went into this. The reason we selected the number of slots as we did just for New Canaan was not because we thought they would all be filled in, but because we wanted the option of a slot open every day. And one of the concerns was, we are paying for a larger number of slots, but we actually imagined that we're going to be filling less than those. We don't know the exact number. And so Kevin Moynihan, our first selectman in New Canaan, proposed adding in another town because then you have larger volume, you still can afford now to have a slot every day. I can't stand here and guarantee you that that's the exact right number because I don't know. All I can tell you is that it's a starting point, and that if we were to do this, good faith, and we were to all work together, Canaan and Darien and Silver Hill, we would see and we would know probably within weeks what the demand looks like. And if that turns out to be too many slots or too few slots, we would then have to address that.
Okay, and New Canaan is running it through their human services?
So we would partner with all parts of the New Canaan Town Government, human services being one of that. Certainly Bethany Zara, who's our Ali Ramstick, who's our director, would be heavily involved in the planning of it, but I think the whole town government would be in some ways involved.
Did their board of finance pass this?
It did.
It did. And can you speak to, I spoke with Dr. Adley, and he can speak if he wants, but maybe go through how this will work with the schools?
Yeah. So actually, thanks to Dr. Adley and some of the folks in the schools, we had a really interesting conversation that raised issues frankly that I had not thought of. What I learned was that 211, which calls Child Guidance Center, has been a very effective means for the schools here in Darien to get assessments within two hours. So that led to a series of conversations that I had with the leaders of Child Guidance Center, the folks at 211. And what we realized was that that need, please, you know, tell me if you've heard otherwise, is being met. The problem, though, becomes that after 211, as Child Guidance does their brief evaluation, and by the way, they fortunately don't have the option of having psychiatrists to do those evaluations, they do safety evaluations, but then they have the challenge of where to send folks next. And so what we realized was it would actually be a real nice partnership between us and 211 Child Guidance. They would do the initial assessment because we don't have the ability to do it within two hours. We're talking 48 hours. But then, if appropriate, the patient would come to us for a longer assessment, because we have child psychiatrists and we're able to do that, and then could use a psychiatrist and so on to make that next step. So I believe that would be a really nice partnership. And in fact, we took that back to the New Canaan school system, who said, what a great idea. So I think that is really the way we would work collaboratively.
And so again, the model is that you would be able to access these services at no cost as a resident of Darien. If you had insurance, that would be the first source of funding to be looked at. But if that wasn't available, the town would pay. The town would pay for your deductible, the town would pay for your copay. Okay, so I'll open it up to any other questions from the board?
Question for you. The need for therapists in the area is rampant. I'm familiar, I've talked to nonprofits in the area. Everyone would love to hire enough to fill the need. Having had to try to find some myself, I know that even finding a waitlist sometimes is impossible. This is the first time that this town has been able to put some money aside for this mental health purpose. It's huge for us. I'm thrilled for the ability to help our residents. But my concern is, what if those five slots are not enough? What if you have 10 people a day calling? But my concern is, what if you have 10 from New Canaan and three from Darien? How are we going to make sure that our residents are served in a manner in which we are hoping, with this investment, that we can be helped?
It's a great question, and honestly, I was thinking about it on the way over. And the honest answer is, we would need to create a steering group that is equally represented by Darien and New Canaan, and we would have to come out with a fair system for that. If we exceed those numbers, we're going to have to figure out together how to fund that. To me, because the need might be greater isn't a reason not to do it at all, but it's a reason you have to start somewhere. If we set aside 20 slots and quadrupled the cost, you know, I think it would be harder to get off the ground, in fact. I'm not sure people would be on board for that. So we are starting where we think is a reasonable guess, but I agree with you. We'll only know when we start it.
Will you advertise this service? Is there a plan to think about that? I mean, there's a lot of New Canaan partners. How do we in Darien access that?
Frankly, it's just to be fair, it's New Canaan because they've already committed the money.
Right, no, no, I just was curious.
So one thought is, because of exactly what you said earlier, I'm not sure I would advertise it first. In fact, I might see what the demand is like even before advertising. I would love to advertise eventually, but I think we have to get some sense of what the demand is like before we do that. There's also an issue, and this is a little complicated, about what happens if people who don't live in Canaan and Darien come. And I'll tell you, this has been discussed with our attorneys as well as consultants. We cannot legally send somebody away because they don't live in Darien or Canaan. However, we can have a list price. And if you are there, here's the price. If you happen to live in Canaan and Darien, we would verify that. The grants from the town covers that. If you're from a different town, you would have to pay the list price. Now, the list price will not be inexpensive. It would probably be somewhere between $1,000 and $1,200. However, we may get folks if we, so I'm a little nervous about advertising and having people coming from far away. And again, using up slots that we really want to use for local folks.
Right. And I don't know that advertising maybe is the right word, but I guess I want to make sure that if we're going to be able to make the investment, which is, again, a big thing for us, that our residents know that it's an available service.
Right, so fair enough. Maybe we don't call it advertising, but we certainly want people to know about it. And how we'll do that in a proportionate way, again, we want the steering committee to weigh in so that Canaan doesn't feel that Darien is getting too many folks, Darien doesn't feel New Canaan. We should do it in a coordinated way. I don't have the answer for that yet, but it's a good question.
What happens after ARPA, after those funds are no longer available? I imagine the way that you describe it, you're doing these assessments and these people are going to get to full-time providers so they're not going to be permanently or consistently treated at your facility.
It'll be new ones.
So what happens, number one, what happens to this program when the ARPA funds are done? And we'll let folks decide about it.
Great question. And at this point, the plan is that the New Canaan, this is for the New Canaan side, the New Canaan Community Fund under Lauren Patterson, has committed to raise the funds to carry this on beyond either the first or second year, depending on how many funds we have to start. I wish there was another revenue model. Believe me, I wish that there was a sustainable model that I could roll out, that this would pay for itself. But this is why services like this don't exist. There isn't. Insurance companies won't pay for this, or they'll pay only a small piece of it. So we will need to be subsidized indefinitely.
I want another follow-up. So the benefit of this program is ultimately you're going to get people in need to full-time providers faster because they've had an assessment already done. So all of a sudden, these other providers are going to say, oh, well, you're already been assessed. So instead of you having to wait for five weeks, we'll take you in three. That's really how that business works? I mean, are slots become available more readily for people who already have assessments?
So it's part of it. But let me just add another piece, which I think is even more important. The initial assessment actually directs what kind of treatment you need. Not all treatment is created equal. So who you need to go to and what kind of services you need to avail yourselves of depends on that assessment. There is no service in this right now. So people are really kind of looking in the dark for their first therapist provider, and it may be the right person, it may not be. So a good assessment, and I'm talking about a high-quality assessment done by people with significant training that includes an MD and so on, that is hard to find. And so that's the first benefit. But the second benefit is what you said, which is that when you have a good first assessment, you can now target the referral very specifically. We do this every day. And I can tell you that when you are in the field and when that's your expertise, is doing assessments and finding right providers, it is much easier to find people relatively quickly. Can we address the overall mental health crisis in the country? Of course not. I don't propose resolving all the problems. But I do think it will get a little easier.
So when you're talking about an assessment with psychiatrists, you're talking about a medical condition that you could be diagnosed with. So you're talking schizophrenia, bipolar, these kind of things that you'll be able to, or are we just talking eating disorders? Are we talking suicide? Like, there's a huge scope here when we go through an assessment that needs all different types of treatment, obviously, like you're saying.
So let me just sort of see.
So they walk out of this assessment, and do you have a diagnosis?
So in the field, we tend not to separate those things out. I know that it can be packaged that way sometimes, that there's bipolar and there's schizophrenia and depression. In practice, when we assess people, they rarely fit neatly into those categories. That is, the whole diagnostic system in psychiatry is frankly fairly flawed, and people are way more complicated than individual terms. When we do assessments, we are assessing them in a comprehensive way. It includes people who have MDs, but I wouldn't refer to it as a medical assessment. It's a comprehensive, multi-dimensional, the term in the field for what it's worth is a bio-psychosocial assessment. You're assessing their biology, their psychology, and their social environment, all wrapped into one, because that's what mental illness really is. So that's not an easy thing to put into a package. It doesn't mean we wouldn't use diagnostic terms where they're helpful, but I'm very cautious not to say that diagnosis is the end result, because in fact, getting a label actually is rarely the solution, and actually sometimes even can be harmful. So we have to be very careful about how we describe that assessment.
I'm a little skeptical with this. So when you started off, you said the Patient Advisory Committee was consulted, and the clear consensus of what the problem was, was I can't get in. I can't get in to see anyone. There's simply no access. There are no providers. And what this has done is it's jumped from that judgment to a model that says, we're going to set up something where we need to subsidize and pay for this. But I heard in the assessment, and when I've talked to people in town, there's an awful lot of people who have an enormous amount of money and very good health coverage. They simply can't find the people to get the services they need. This is not a question about they need to be subsidized in some way or paid by town government to go out and get this done. So I got a few questions, but one of them is, how did you make the leap from what I'm hearing the Patient Advisory Committee and a lot of townspeople are saying, which is, we got a ton of money in insurance coverage and we can't get the service that we need, to saying now towns need to come forward and start to pay for this? I'll stop there. I've got some other questions.
So, you know, I'm going to respectfully disagree with your conclusions.
I'm just asking questions, relax.
What's that?
I'm just asking questions, relax. It's good.
I feel very relaxed. We're already funded. I've been doing this for my whole career. In my experience, I don't know your experience, maybe you have your own. People see the problem through a narrow lens. People often see the problem through something that they've experienced personally. Insurance doesn't pay for these things. People can pay privately, but they don't know where to start. And what we hear, not just from that Patient Advisory Group, but from patients that we meet with every day, and I've been meeting with for my whole career, is that they don't have a good way to get in. They see these things as obstacles. They see the copay. They see the struggling with getting the insurance reimbursement as obstacles. I don't think it's intrinsically that they don't have the money to do it, but I think that they feel these are the barriers that say to them, I'm not going to do anything now. I'm going to wait. I'm going to wait longer. And that they'll come back, unfortunately, when things have reached a great crisis. So my experience is that this is what people need. It's hard to predict anything for sure. But I think what we would see is a lot of people coming to care who haven't otherwise come, and we would get there before it becomes the kind of crisis that we unfortunately see when people end up in the emergency room or worse.
If you start off doing this where you've got, echoing some of the concerns before, where you have a slot where maybe you could do a person a day, something like that, and it's all very mysterious in terms of what the demand's going to be, it could be a lot more, particularly if we start to advertise it, as Sarah says. I'm a little worried about sort of this element of the mental health care model, this being something that we fund specifically out of government and create a sort of public nonprofit partnership to do all this kind of work while all the rest of this stuff remains sort of privately provided. And how that works, I'm a little worried that, I'm not sure that's really been thought through in terms of how this is going to come about and where we would get the money if we see that there is an exploding need for specifically what you're talking about here, and we've not thought about it holistically in terms of how this is supposed to play out.
I imagine you do a lot of public-private funding of various health services.
Not anything with the magnitude of cost potential like this is.
$250,000 is larger than you fund. I'm surprised to hear that.
Not the $250,000 for what the sort of minimal service level that's envisioned here, but how much this could explode if the demand takes off, like Sarah was talking before.
Yeah, I mean, we're not paying for their ongoing treatment. We're paying for getting people in the front door. And it actually seems to me a fairly minimal amount in order to get people initial entry and access to a system that I think feels to people prohibitive, it feels very hard to connect to. To me, that's a good place for government to help, when people are suffering and experience a barrier of getting into the system. Interestingly, it's much easier to get insurance to pay once you've had an initial assessment, once you've gotten in, and it's more clear what those needs are. Unfortunately, it's not easy to get insurance to pay for this, which is why we're proposing to do it. This is not the first of its kind. There are other models about this around the state and around the country. It's the first in this area. It's the first in New Canaan, and I imagine it'd be the first in Darien. But I think there are ways that we have to respond to the needs of our citizens. And right now, at least, this is what I'm hearing. I'm a little biased, this is my field, but you all know and can comment whether you hear the same, that mental health needs really have exploded within the last couple of years.
Yeah, I don't doubt that there's exploding mental health need. I'm completely on board with the first part of your question. I'm just worried that we haven't thought through the implications of sort of two local town governments coming together to try and fund a little piece of this, which is this assessment work, which, from what you said before, doesn't even result in a diagnostic. even result in a diagnostic. It's just sort of a similar, sort of point of view, I guess, about an individual case.
That's not quite what I said. What I said is-
Well, you said that you didn't want people to be labeled with a diagnostic, that that could be harmful.
Because they're actually not useful. So, and that's true whether, there's no amount of money you could pay that would get you to something that I actually don't believe is a useful method within our field. So it's, it's not a failure of the program that it doesn't lead to a diagnosis. It's actually what good care looks like.
Okay.
Not, not a question so much for you, but as we're thinking about this as a board, I mean, one thing that challenges that I agree with is that we haven't thought this through. I mean, I kind of look at here, sitting in this chair, and say, oh, well, New Canaan does this, and here's, and here's your fund facility, and here's this idea. We, we as a town, and we as a board, haven't spent a moment until this moment, in terms of talking about the effective role of government in helping our citizens with this health crisis, and what the most effective place would be. What are our priorities? I understand what you're saying, and it seems to make perfect sense to me, this will help people get in the door. But we haven't sat here and talked about that, and realized that that's the problem, and this is what we want to do. I think there's a whole panoply of conversations, I think, that we have to have as a, as a board, and to hear from the community to hear, to really make a judgment as to whether or not, and this is just me speaking, but whether or not we should be in this, in this program. And these are conversations that have probably gone on between you and New Canaan for months. So this has been hours, and I don't see myself ready.
To be honest, it's years.
But Mike, we're not, we're not making that decision tonight. Tonight is just-
Oh, okay. I thought I saw a resolution.
No, 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 no. That's what I started saying earlier, is we're not making, no, this is a way, no, no. There's, there's so many other questions for this. So this, this was-
But just to agree with a statement you made. So we've been talking about this in New Canaan for years. So prior to the pandemic, the New Canaan Community Foundation put together and spent close to a year talking about the mental health needs in town. Now, I would wonder if there are parts of your community that have had these conversations, maybe not you. And I, I guess I would just urge you to have those conversations, because these are, these problems are not going away. And people are suffering out there. And so, you know, we're proud to offer services, and I fully understand if, if, if the time is not right, and you're not ready. But I, you know, wanted to make you aware of it, give, certainly give you the opportunity to join in.
I think that certainly the timing is now. I think we all recognize there's a mental health crisis. It's just that we need a little bit of an education before we can go down that path just yet, at least from my standpoint.
Dr. Gerber, so I know people will start wondering. So you have a list of providers that have been working with Silver Hill from New Canaan, and you probably have a few from Darien, right?
Sure, absolutely.
Okay. So how will you add to that roster from Darien? You'll, obviously, you'll work with Ally, but, but will you look to develop specifically resources from Darien to be able to offer to Darien residents? Or will, or will you just fold them into your roster that you have now, your rolodex over there?
So one of the ideas from the beginning is to have a steering committee that represents all the towns that we serve. So even though, yes, it's true, we've been working with folks in New Canaan and Darien for many years. Actually, you know, just in the last week, there's been some emails going around in New Canaan about convening a group to look at that list, supplement it with things that Bethany and, and the town has, to call for other providers, and to really keep that list completely up to date. So if Darien were to join in, Darien would, would be invited to do all those same things, and would be represented in the steering committee, so that, you know, even as things change, and new providers come, and old providers go, we would make sure that that was always an up-to-date list.
And you feel that the two-day for the assessment, and I understand that the assessment actually is, can be part of therapy, right? You finally, you, you made that move, and, and that provides some answers for you right there. But the handoff part, you know, I'm just concerned that we're, we're going on a leap of faith here, that you'll have the providers. And, and, you know, I've said this before, but what we don't want to do is have our residents come, get the assessment, get the prescription, right? And then they go to get the prescription filled, but there's no one to fill it. And, and you're, you're, I, I trust you, but I'm going to trust and verify that you'll actually have the providers, and, and this won't be a two-day, here's your assessment, three months, here's your visit.
Right. I mean, it's exactly right. And that's what we would measure, and that's what we would track. I mean, it's, you know, I think you're asking all the right questions. I guess the question I would ask you back is, what's the alternative? Because to not do anything, to me, doesn't seem like a good option. If there were another competing organization proposing something like this, I would say, oh, all right, let's see who's got more evidence. But right now, this is, this is the option that we have, and, and we're moving forward with. So I, you know, I do hope that, that you guys will consider the importance of, of joining it in a timely way.
So just to confirm, so this is a $250,000 investment for two years?
Correct.
And then after two years? But obviously, there'll be assessments, I probably shouldn't use that word. There'll, there'll be metrics being measured-
Metrics monitoring.
On an ongoing basis, to determine. Okay.
True.
When, if we choose at this point to put this concept on hold, when is this rolling out in New Canaan?
July, oh, sorry.
Yeah.
July 1st.
July 1st. Okay. So, let's say in September, you will have some measurements on, on, on some of these KPIs that you're, you're saying that you don't have at this moment. They're going, they're going to have assessments at that point.
I haven't spoken to New Canaan about it, but it hardly seems fair for the option to be, join anytime for the same price. So I don't know what it would look like in September. I don't know what it would look like next year. I think that's a conversation that we'll have to have with New Canaan if, if you decide not to join.
So I, is, so what I'm hearing is that you would like us to make a decision to join you in July?
I think that's when we're launching. And I, and I think it, for fairness, and for everybody being part of this and building the program together, that makes sense. If, if that's not possible for you, and I certainly understand that, I think then I have to go back to the folks in New Canaan and have a conversation with them about, about what it would look like after then.
And then with ARPA funds, there's pretty strict requirements for reporting. Who, who will be doing the reporting over there?
Good question. You know, I, I haven't had that conversation with the town yet. I would imagine we would work on it together, but we could figure that out.
Okay.
I would love, if possible, to have Ally give us a bit of a background and understanding of where we are.
Yeah, please. Yeah.
Would you mind coming up, Ally? Thank you. Sorry.
Yes. I asked Ally if she would be here to answer questions just like this.
I'm Ally Ramsick. I'm the Director of Human Services. I'm a licensed clinical social worker. I think this would be an invaluable resource to our town. Over the last six weeks in particular, the amount of parents that I've spoken to, who are scared of their children who have depression, anxiety, and the, if they've ever mentioned the idea of dying, or the thought, not saying that they're suicidal and have to go to the emergency room, but to be able to get in within 48 hours and be seen by a professional, sometimes, like you were saying, Monica, and now Dr. Gerber had said at one of our meetings, even that initial intervention can make a big difference. If someone's willing to get help, and you have to wait three weeks for them to talk to a professional, you might miss that opportunity. Or if you have a spouse who is, you know, maybe their, their substance abuse is getting out of control, and they're willing to talk to somebody, and then they have to try to navigate how to get into someone, and how to, how to actually talk to a professional, and you have to wait, you can miss that opportunity. And I just feel like this is something that now more than ever, because of, because of all the mental health, you know, the skyrocketing issues since COVID, it's, like Dr. Gerber said, it's not getting better. And I feel like this is, to be able to have somewhere you know you can go within 48 hours, and have a thorough assessment by some of the best professionals in the area.
Ally, do you see the demand being more than five a week on one downside?
It's hard to tell. I would think once the word gets out there, then you'll, and people know this is an opportunity. I know that right now, it's very hard for us to get people in to see people for, for therapy. And let's also keep in mind, not everyone in Darien can pay privately for therapists. I can't. So paying out of pocket is not always an option for many of our residents. So I think it's limited, but if we can partner with Silver Hill, and they have this, this network of, of resources, I feel like it's-
But the network will, won't pay for the service. It'll only pay for the assessment.
Right.
So, so the, so the individuals will still have to pay for-
But I'm saying Silver Hill's network, that they have lots of connections within the community, that they would be able to expedite it, like Dr. Gerber said, even just having that initial assessment, so that they can say, okay, your, your husband really needs to go to detox, and, and then go to 28-day rehab. Or you could say, well, he's not so severe. Maybe he can just do outpatient therapy, and then they can guide you to what the resources are. But I think people trying to navigate on their own as a layperson, it's very overwhelming.
Just one more question. So, you have a $3,000 deductible, you go into Silver Hill, you get an assessment done, it's $1,300. That $1,300 that was covered by ARPA funds will still go towards the deductible. So now your next treatment, you only need, okay. $1700 for services?
I don't think so.
No?
We actually checked this.
Okay.
Oh, yeah. This is a big one.
And my first reaction too was, I don't think so. I checked and verified.
Because you're still billing the insurance company, and you're covering my bill, not the insurance companies.
Yeah. So we'd be, that's only fair.
Yeah.
Right?
Yeah, that's only fair. Otherwise, you're double-dipping.
And on your copay.
Yep.
Any other questions for Ally? Thanks, Ally. Okay. So I think what, what, what we should do is probably, thank you for your presentation. Really appreciate it. Thank you. And I think what we'll do is give the community a little bit of time to come forward with their thoughts, and any questions they have. I would ask people to funnel them to Ally. Are you comfortable with that, Ally?
Yes.
Okay. And, or, or to the first selectman's office. I'm happy to, to help. And again, thank you for your time, and we will revisit this in the near future, and let you know how we decide either way. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next up?
Thank you for your patience. Anything we can do, Kate?
You know, another option if you want is, or email it to everybody, email it to the board, and they can just follow along. I can just say, next slide, next slide. And they follow along.
Kate'll get this.
My eyes are getting old. Cynthia, which one out over the weekend, right? They have it. It's just the one slide, right?
Right.
Yeah. But, okay. What's the front page look like? Okay, so that's not it? That one? Okay. Actually, they have a physical replacement slide. I just want to-
They have one. Yeah, they do.
Hopefully, it'll go on both screens.
Jill, will you hold that thing? Will you hold that? Sorry, just being a mom. Oh, I thought it was a computer. Okay.
Chris, are you going to stand up and dance or sit on the table?
No, I'll stand. The left turn. Can you put a computer position to you?
Here we go. Bingo.
We're in. Okay.
Everything working here? Almost.
Hey, look at that.
Wow. Now, what, Jill, you got, you got the driver's seat here, right?
Yeah.
Okay. Next item on the agenda. I want to first, thank you so much for working on this. I know that these building committees are just a tremendous amount of responsibility and a tremendous amount of time. So I want to thank Sarah Newman, who's, who's on the Board of Selectmen. I want to thank Jill McCannan, who's our Vice Chair, and, and Chris Price for leading the charge on this, is, and David Martin, who's our, who's our eagle eye on the funding. Really, a sincere thank you for all of the work that you are doing on this. It's really, really, really appreciated.
Happy to hear.
Here, here. Particularly Chris, who probably was now wondering what he got himself into, right?
I'm, I'm, I'm learning.
So we're gonna, we're gonna go through the presentation, and then, just to give you a heads up, we'll vote on each one of these resolutions separately.
Yeah. And as we know, you guys probably know, at this point, when we do get to voting, we're going to need to vote on them as three separate, they're three separate projects, three separate resolutions.
Right.
So, I'm Chris Price, Chairman of the Hindley Homes and Royal Building Committee. I won't read every slide, because a lot of this folks already know, but for the benefit of the public, the members of the committee are listed here. On this slide, I'm joined this evening by Jill McCammon, who is the Vice Chair, but honestly, that title doesn't do justice to the amount of work that she puts in on this. Sarah Newman, who is a liaison to the Board of Selectmen, and Dave Martin, who is liaison to the Board of Finance. And honestly, this doesn't, this doesn't move forward without equal contributions by all of these guys and other members of the committee. Next slide is the list of the ex officio members, many of whom are as equally as involved and active on a, on a day-to-day basis. Dr. Adley, who's with us, has been a huge help. His input's been terrific. Mike Lynch is the Director of Facilities, you all know. And we'll talk about some of Mike's specific input on the project in a little bit. Obviously, Kate, who's with us, Monica, a number of others who, and then there'll be other folks who are ex officio members, whose involvement will increase as we get further along into the process. And we've also had active involvement by members of the PTO. Tonight, why we're, why we're here, and what we want to talk about, Jill reads my mind already, we're on the next slide. What we want to talk about this evening, briefly go through information that we've gone through already with this board, which is what our charge is. But we'll talk a little bit more in detail in terms of the project summary on a school-by-school basis. There's been progress since we were last in front of you, in particular, as a result of the architect selection process. And then we'll also talk for really the, the real reason that we're here, which is the appropriation request, the revised appropriation that we're going to seek from the RTM in June. Next slide, the building committee charge. This is just the verbatim quote. Really, the key, the key words in here is, are that the, the building committee is authorized to renovate in accordance with the educational specs, as approved by the Darien Board of Education on May 25th, 2021. So what does that really mean? Translated into English, that is eliminate the portable classrooms. This is taken from the ed specs that were done for each of the three schools. Eliminate the temporary portable classrooms, renovate or remove and rebuild library and global learning commons, right-sized classrooms and special learning rooms, and then update a number of outdated mechanical and electrical systems, and the physical building envelopes as well. Next slide, Jill. Why are we renovating and not building new schools like at Ox Ridge? Just before I get into the specifics, the way this presentation's going to be broken down, first, we'll, we'll cover a number of points that are common to all three of the projects. that are common to all three of the projects. And then we'll get into each of the schools specifically and get into a little bit more detail on the scope of each of the projects on each of the schools. So, why are we renovating three schools, not building three new schools? A lot of that, a lot of that is, the good news is, is that due to the, it's the quality of the buildings, the quality of the maintenance, how they've been taken care of. It's ultimately more cost-effective to do a renovation than it is on these schools than it would be to tear them down and to build new ones. I think the decision was made, the assessment was made with respect to Ox Ridge, that no, that was going to be a better economic decision and better for the students to build an entirely new school. The factors that were taken into account in making that decision, really, a lot of it was the maintenance of the facilities. And that's, you know, back to Mike Lynch and his team and the work he's done to keep these schools up and running. These schools, in most cases, were last renovated in nineteen ninety-six, so, you know, that's the newest part of the schools that he's dealing with. Some of these schools date back to the forties. The ability to optimize the sites where the schools sit on the sites and not necessarily to build new schools in different places on the sites. And then it came down to cost. That's the good news, so the decision was made that we could renovate in place, not build new schools. The flip side of that is the portable classrooms have exceeded their useful life. They need to be replaced. We've toured the portable classrooms. I can, you know, I can see how that's not an optimal learning environment for our kids. Bring the kids in out of the rain, if you will. One other part of that is renovating the libraries. The libraries at Hindley and Royal were additions in the seventies and are past their useful life. The Holmes Library needs to be renovated. When we toured that school, the library and the gym abut each other, and when people are in the gym, it's a little bit difficult to operate in the library. I didn't have an appreciation for how libraries have evolved. We've toured a number of the schools that some of the architectural candidates had recently worked on, either brand-new schools or renovated schools, and we saw what they're now calling global, or general learning commons, or learning area, learning centers. When I was an elementary student, I didn't go in the library there. I couldn't come up with a good reason to go to the library. Touring these schools, touring these schools, it's amazing, the kids are in there, they're engaged, they're learning, they're bright. The seating, the furniture, the way they circulate, it's just, it's a whole different world from certainly the way kids of my generation viewed the libraries when they were in elementary schools. They're technology-rich environments, they're movable learning zones, the kids circulate. You know, there's formal and informal learning going on. So, that's a big driver for why we would renovate what are, you know, seventies-era libraries. Why would we right-size the classrooms? Part of it, in the case of some of the schools, Royal in particular, is some of the classrooms are beneath the size, the standard size that the state, the state sets. We need to optimize the class sizes. Some of them may be too small, you may not be able to fit a full class in there comfortably. In terms of instructional flexibility, again, the way I went to elementary school, it was rows of desks, teacher in the front, teachers taught to you. We saw some of these new schools, the teachers are moving around, the kids are moving around, they're sitting in groups. It's a whole different way, a whole different way of learning, and the older classroom model doesn't work as well for that, which really covers the educational delivery point. And from a consistency standpoint, we want all the kids at all the grade levels to have classrooms that are appropriate for the way they learn and to not feel short-changed because they're in section A versus section B. Next slide is the, really the last of the slides that I would say pertained to the three schools as a whole. And that's why do our systems need renovation? And I can't stress enough how important this aspect of the project is. There was a twenty sixteen in existing conditions survey that was done, coincidentally, by the firm that we ultimately selected as an architect. And there's been a lot of attention paid to the systems that was covered very, very extensively in the ed specs. This is a key part of this project. When Mike Lynch and I were talking a week or so ago, you know, he said ballpark, probably sixty percent of the budget on this project is going to be systems, right? It's going to be things like boilers, HVAC, windows, plumbing, electricity, upgrading Wi-Fi. It's going to be stuff you're not going to see. It's not necessarily going to be the pretty stuff, but it's going to be really, really critical. It's going to be really, really critical to the longevity of the schools and the ability of the schools to function for years to come. Things, another thing you might not see, and we'll talk about this a little bit later. Planning for the future, right? Each of the architects that we talked to talked about having the roofs on the schools be ready to receive solar panels if a decision is made to move down that, move that in that direction and put what they call PV, photovoltaic cells on the roofs to provide solar panels. Again, not the flashy stuff that you see, fancy lobbies, fancy libraries, fancy gyms, but it's critically important to the project. We'll talk a little, Mike has provided more detail than this, and we can provide that to you on a school-by-school basis. But essentially, like I said, upgrading and increasing electrical systems, converting the lighting so that all the lighting in the schools is LED, so it's cool, it's efficient, improving or replacing or converting boilers, so there's more consistent hot water systems. I mentioned solar a second ago. And critically important, upgrading the heating systems and installing air conditioning. None of the three schools that we're charged with renovating have air conditioning. That's, puts our schools behind a number of schools, you know, comparable schools in peer towns. So, shifting the focus, next slide, shifting the focus a little bit onto a school-by-school basis. I'll go fairly quickly through the left-hand column on each of the three schools. The right-hand side, you all can see for yourselves, it's kind of statistics and numbers in terms of what's currently there versus what's planned. Obviously, demolish and remove the portables. This is Hindley, I'm sorry. Add new library, take down the old library, add new classrooms, renovate a number of the program spaces, some of which are moving to Ox Ridge. In particular, the Developmental Learning Center is moving to Ox Ridge. Dr. Adley gave me a little bit of an education on what exactly that was. I just know we're moving it. And some undersized classrooms that are in that school. Upgrading, as I said, the mechanical, electrical, plumbing, and technology. And then we're studying, and this will be part of the overall design development with the architects and then with the engineers that they've retained separately. And depending on results of traffic studies, possibly extending and improving the bus loop, possibly putting in a new traffic loop with an entry and an exit on and off of the post road for Hindley. Putting in additional parking. And importantly, for those listening at home, we will be studying the drainage situation at Hindley. That's an important part. Each of the architects highlighted the fact that there was a drainage issue at Hindley. We're well aware that neighbors in that area feel like there's a drainage problem coming from Hindley. What we have said is that is absolutely an important part of the design and the engineering of the Hindley project, but it has to be done as part of the overall Hindley project, and it has to be done in conjunction with the appropriate departments within the town, which logically, Public Works, possibly P&amp;Z and others. That has to be all kind of coordinated, but that will be an important part of the Hindley project.
Was that, sorry, was that factored into the cost?
It is.
It is, okay.
Switching gears to the Holmes project. Again, common theme, demolish and remove the portables, add classrooms. In the case of Holmes, renovate the library rather than remove and replace the library. Renovate a number of the specialized spaces. Again, upgrade the infrastructure. Mechanical, heating, electrical, put in air conditioning. Studying potential expansion of the parking. And again, the topic has come up, a number of people have raised it, we've been asked, where does that stand? And that is the Curtis property, which is the property immediately to the north of the Holmes property. We know it's there. The land surveyor who was doing the overall land survey on the Holmes property is including the Curtis property on the survey. The way I've described it to people when they've asked me, what's the plan on Curtis, is we need to figure out what we have first. By that, I mean, what's there? Is it usable? What is it wetlands? What's the elevation? What is the grade? If we were to try to do anything there, what would be required to either bring it to grade or to make it usable? Is it usable? So, that's all, again, part of the study, that's part of the cost estimates that we did. But it will, again, be wrapped into more globally, the design development of the Holmes project. And if a determination is made that that parcel is useful and might be a positive addition to the Holmes School, then we will come to the town and raise that with the town and see if the town, talk to the Board of Education, talk to the town, talk to the school district. Do they want, does the school district want it? Does the Board of Education want it? Is the town willing to, you know, convey control of that property of the schools? But that'll all be part of the process once we've determined whether it's usable or not. Switching to the Royal project. Sound a little bit like a broken record. Demolish the portables. In the case of Royal, remove and replace the library. Add classrooms. Royal is, as I noted, one of the schools where a few of the classrooms are actually below state specs for size. And we need, the architect that we selected actually had a very interesting idea about the way to possibly right-size a number of those classrooms. Once again, upgrade infrastructure. We learned on our tour that Royal has three completely separate heating systems, some dating back to the forties. Trying to either replace the determination will be made to whether those need to either be fully replaced or some can be preserved and they can be integrated, but to, you know, create a modern learning environment for our students. Again, they are studying the possibility of extending the bus loop and adding parking. So, again, some of this is, some of this is history. We've talked about this already. The committee was established in February of two thousand and twenty-two. We are shooting to get design underway and, you know, make real progress on the design review and approval process, working, for instance, with the building department, with P&amp;Z, working also with the state during the summer and into the mid-fall of two thousand and twenty-two, with a goal to start construction in June of two thousand and twenty-three. So, a little more than a year from now, you know, hopefully there'll be, although not really groundbreaking, but the start of, you know, the actual start of construction when the kids leave school in June of two thousand and twenty-three, with a goal to, over the course of two, basically two full years, two full summers, to have the kids moving into and starting school in the completely renovated facilities for the beginning of school in two thousand and twenty-five. Important to note that these are going to be three projects done concurrently. We're not going to do one, two, and three, we're going to do them all at the same time. A key factor in the architect selection, and then a key factor in the upcoming construction manager selection is going to be qualification bandwidth horsepower to be able to run three consecutive projects on the same timeframe. So, next slide, please. From that, from talking about the schools and the scope, maybe what I'll do is let me stop there. Any questions on the portion that I went through, which was a little bit of the history of the schools, a little bit of how we got to where we are now, the scope of the project, recognizing that it's all very preliminary, but any questions before we move on to the grant part of it?
You know, just quickly, for people who are looking at home and you look at the spread between the various schools, Holmes at twenty-four, the others at twenty-seven and a half, and Hindley at twenty-six. So, was the feeling that the Holmes School was, the bones were a little better, their work, the necessitated there, less extensive? Because it's just a little bit different.
Yeah, yeah, we'll get to, we'll get specifically to how we arrived at the numbers for each of them. A big, big part of that was that Holmes isn't having its library torn down and rebuilt. That's a big part of it. I think, you know, the architects will tell you that they think that Holmes has less far to go to catch up to the kind of standards that we want it to. Much, Hindley and Royal, just, they just need more work, so.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Is your sense in looking at some of these modern schools where they've worked out and figured out how to deliver education that wasn't being delivered when we were in elementary school? Is it your sense that this eighty million dollars gets us largely there and that you're satisfied that after the expenditure of that money, that it really would be another twenty-five years before we need to consider this kind of expenditure again? Reason I ask that is I just want to make sure that when you saw that, that you felt like for this kind of money being invested in these schools, that we could get where we needed to be and we wouldn't, this wouldn't be sort of five or ten years and we'd need to start over and tear the schools down?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of answers to that question. One, I'm not really the right guy to tell you whether eighty is the right number, because I, in order to say, you know, gee, what's the right per-square-foot cost? There are people, and Dave will talk about that, and folks that were involved in the cost estimating, the architects, the folks from ONG, other members of our committee that have a lot of real-world, hard construction experience, looked very, very hard at the numbers, and I think are comfortable that those are the right numbers to deliver the scope of the project that we know about now. And then adding to that contingency and growth factors, because we'll talk about it in a second, these are renovations, there's a lot that comes with renovations that, you know, you start taking walls down, you start getting in the ceilings, you start getting in the systems. There's a fair amount of unknowns. So, based on the knowledge that we have now about the facilities and the conceptual, early-stage conceptual drawings done by the architects, and then applying the expertise of the folks who, you know, know what this stuff costs, and I hope this is an answer to your question, we think the numbers we came up with are more than sufficient to deliver the scope.
I'd interrupt you, but my question was less a little bit about cost, and my question is judgments, but more if we invest all that money, let's stipulate for a moment that that's perfect to cover that scope. Does the end product resulting from that scope create school environments in those three schools that you say sufficiently provides the ability to replicate the experience that you saw in these newer schools? And say, yeah, that's close enough without us having to tear down the schools, and we think we won't have to come back for another twenty-five years to do all this?
We believe so. I mean, the charge specifically to the architects was, you're not just building the school for August of two thousand and twenty-five. You're building a school that, you know, the next time we have to come back to you is, you know, hopefully twenty-five or more years from now. You know, if you think of the timeline, if nineteen ninety-six was the last time the renovation was, renovations were done, you know, that will we create schools that will last at least that gap? Who knows, twenty-five years down the road, this may be a different discussion, and it may be these schools really have outlived their useful life, and they need to come down, and we need to build new ones. But the goal and the charge of the architects were to get us that far. And so, we believe, we believe based on the folks that, you know, we're going to retain, that what they're going to design are schools that are going to get us that far.
Of course, you and I both know that twenty-five years ago was yesterday.
I know, nineteen ninety-six kind of feels like yesterday.
I'm almost with it, Dr. Adley might be someone to weigh in on that particular point.
Yeah, I appreciate the question, actually, John. The trickle-down effect of some of this is some of these major spaces from music spaces, art spaces, word language space, all of these spaces are, and are going to be modified and improved and incorporated into the project, including outdoor spaces. So, the actual educational experience will certainly last the test of time. That's the main purpose, yes.
Yeah, and I mean, you know, I think about nineteen ninety-six, or bless you, nineteen ninety-six and in the early two thousands, that's really when my kids were in elementary school, you know, they were at Ox Ridge. And, you know, their elementary school experience looked more like the schools we toured than when I went to school. And so I don't think it's, I don't think the changes are that are as, you know, are as extraordinary.
Jill, correct me if I'm wrong, but the genesis for all this was the 2016 master plan, right? And the master plan itself was one of the main drivers behind the ed specs that were put together for each of the schools. And they are, the ed specs are really quite detailed in the specifications and requirements. And they were developing design with the idea that they would make the learning experience even across the elementary schools in town.
Correct. And in fact, the board did for a time consider just doing the portables, but that was deemed unsatisfactory because it didn't pass the test of making that 25-year. Then you're just, you're just, you know, adding a couple of portables, or excuse me, a couple of classrooms on, but you haven't really thought about the flow and how they might affect. And if that's the best place to put them, we were just, it ended up looking like a, just a short-term fix. And so at, at the time, we stepped back and said, and that's when we did the 2021 NCA study. You need to look a little more carefully at the entire building and decide where these classrooms need to go, how that affects everything else, what are the best places, things to tear down and add back up? And that is, so it was the, it's the 2021 study that underlies the current specifications, which got us here. But yes, with, with that point in mind of creating a school that will stand the test of time.
And it was a big factor in, in the architect selection process. And frankly, part of the reason we arrived at the architect that we did, and we'll talk about that in a little bit, was the sense that they were thinking down the road that way. And that was, we clearly felt like they were more future-thinking. Yeah, go ahead.
Two questions. One's a really easy one. So I see you built and added space for parking. Are kids getting driver's licenses earlier?
Yeah, I mean, they could be, yeah.
It's part of the new education.
And, and my second question is, that, that's one, that's an easy one. But in, in general, so are you building in for, for additional capacity here? And are you, is this pretty flexible as far as going forward? Other options for classrooms?
I'm going to actually let Jill answer that, only if, I don't mean to put her on the spot, but she has a much better grasp on projections of that enrollment and things like that. So yes, I think the, we are, in general terms, taking into account expanding enrollment, specifically rates of growth and things like that. Jill probably knows that better. On your parking question, actually, interestingly, at Henley, most of that additional parking is going to be for bikes because one of the things the architects noted was that, that that school is a very, very heavy bike, bike school. And so they're going to, they're going to expand the bike spaces, anyway.
Yeah, so yes, but a lot of our schools have a little bit less parking than what the population currently needs, which is also causing traffic on our roads. So, and it's causing congestion on our, on our properties. People are parking in strange places, including in the fire lanes. So it's, it's
That's where it's needed now.
Safety issue, you need to have the right amount of parking.
And, and we're going to have a much better feel for that. Currently underway is a traffic study that we've commissioned and paid for. And we'll have a much better feel as to specifically how much and whether it's, is it traffic flow? Is it parking? Is it a combination of the two?
Okay, thank you.
Was there any conversation of cosmetic work done on the old portions of the buildings? Like furniture upgrades and tile upgrades and ceiling upgrades?
Yes.
Okay.
So, yes, certainly on the exterior. So like you'll see one of the conceptuals for Henley, for example. When they take the library down, what was behind, what was behind where the old library, where the library currently is, is the old entrance to the school. And one of the, one of the ideas was to restore the old entrance. Very aesthetically nice renovation of the old, of the old entrance. The conceptual for Royal makes it look like just a, you know, a different building, similarly the backside of Holmes. When they renovate the library, putting in some more glass and things like that, a lot more use of natural light, for example. So, yeah. And then inside as well. And so one of the things that there will be is, you know, an evaluation of furniture, what they call FFNE, furniture fixtures and equipment.
I think the renovation will require, for example, with, when you're doing HVAC, you have to do a lot of the ceilings. So that'll be by necessity. There will be some areas of the building that look a little bit older than others. And I don't believe we have in the budget a full-scale FFNE to refurnish every, every piece of furniture. Our, our classrooms that are not new classrooms or being refurbished will be on our regular furniture replacement cycle.
At this page, stage of the preliminary designs buried into the cost estimates, there are amounts for significant portions of the building that will require significant alteration and portions of the building that will require light alteration. And there's obviously a different price per square foot because lighter alteration might be painting, replacing the ceiling tiles or they had to run a new conduit for the HVAC, right? Whereas the more extensive renovation might be someplace where they actually had to move walls to
Yeah, or just parts of it.
repartition, you know, the classroom size and that type of thing.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to the state grant process. The state grant process, we went through this in some detail the last time we were before this board. The key thing is, that's been drilled into all of our brains as June 30, June 30, June 30. June 30 is the deadline by which we have to submit our state grant application. If we don't submit by June 30, we are off the state calendar for 12 months and the kids don't move into the schools until August of 2025. Once we get, once we get these submitted to the state board, which is called OSC GNR, they're then put on a priority list that's sent to the governor to be considered in December of 2022 and then voted on as part of the overall state education bill in the spring of 2023 with a final grant commitment by July of 2023. The key piece of this, other than the date, is that our applications have to include the full amount of the town appropriation. We have to tell the state the full amount that the town is able to commit to the project, which seems a little bit backwards considering that we have a project that is only at its very, very preliminary, literally hired an architect on this past Friday. Yet we need to submit our best estimate, our best educated calculation of what we think that full appropriation would be. So that full amount is based upon preliminary estimates. I'm going to turn this over shortly to Dave Martin, who really was the one who
Before I switch to the slide, there was an enrollment question. We will have an eight-year enrollment projection as part of the package that goes up to the state.
Right. Key thing is, you know, we're going to, obviously, cost control is important, you know, to, to, you know, John's question, do we think this is the right? Yeah, and we're going to have to stay on top of it. We're going to have to manage it very, very carefully. We hope to spend correctly the first time. You know, we don't want to spend the entire 77-plus million dollars, but we need, you know, we need to take account of an unsettled environment in terms of supply chain, labor shortages, et cetera. And then, you know, but maintain a lot of clear communications with the town, with the, with the, with the school board and with the school district. And the committee is going to be, have to be on top of this very, very carefully. And we've also hired ONG to help us with the state grant submission and to try to get the maximum amount of the state funding. As I noted a little earlier, because these are renovations, there is a significant unknown component to it. You know, the euphemism is, you know, you start tearing the walls down and, you know, what's behind there? We are trying to plan for that as best we can. We're having a asbestos and hazmat study done, for example, the traffic study that's being done. But, and that stuff is all in process and we'll have more information and more data and that will all be rolled into the initial design development plans. But, you know, renovation, there can be a cascading effect. You know, you start discovering a problem and then you discover another and then you, how you fix it may lead to other issues and gets a little bit more complicated. And then you have to meld old school, old school, new school together. We also talked about the Curtis property. We talked about the drainage issue at Henley. Those are, those are kind of unknowns at this point. We know they're out there. Talk a little bit about the architectural process really quickly and then I'm going to turn it over to Dave because it was from the, really, once we went through the architectural selection process, we got to the point where we felt like we had enough meaningful information to really do a careful cost estimate. We, the way this, the way the architectural selection process worked was, earlier in the spring, we issued, the town issued RFPs to the architectural community identifying certain groups of architects that we thought were likely frontrunners. We got nine RFP responses back. From that nine, we had a subcommittee of the HHR committee that was tasked with leading the selection process. That was Jill, myself, Dr. Adley, Paul Harding, and Jamison Riley. And we, we, we did the nine, the initial nine, down to a group of four. We interviewed that group of four. After interviewing that group of four, we selected three to prepare preliminary conceptual designs, effectively a competition, you know, show us your best conceptual. They call the, in the architectural world, it's called, called a charrette, which I guess is a term from architectural school where students do a competition at the end of a semester. Anyway, I learned that as part of, as part of my, you know, I'm learning as I go here. Anyway, so we held a competition. We paid the three finalists so that we could, in effect, own the conceptual, the conceptual drawings that they put together and basically buy that knowledge from them. From that, we held presentations by those three architects a week ago, Monday evening in this room. And ultimately, from that, the subcommittee in a very vigorous back and forth. Oh, and in the process, Jill and I visited a couple of the schools that the finalist architects had worked on, some in Westchester, some in Connecticut. We checked references, we asked around, we talked with, for example, you know, Mike Lynch's counterpart in the school districts that we visited, you know, how are these guys to work with? What was their, what were their processes like? How was their communication? How did they interact with the neighbors? How did they interact with the PTO? You know, we did as, as much diligence as we felt we could do in the period of time that we had. And then each of those architects, as part of the charrette process, was asked to put forth cost estimates, hard and soft cost estimates for the three school project. We separately, as a check and balance, asked ONG to sit in on the charrette presentations and then go and prepare a cost estimate independently, using their own cost estimation specialists in-house, so that we could cross, effectively cross-check the architect's numbers as part of arriving at the proper estimate. I think at this point, I'll start getting into technical terms and I'm sure I'll say it incorrectly. So I'll turn it over to, to Dave in terms of how he took that information, what he added, subtracted, accounted for, et cetera.
Sure. Well, let me give you a quick sense. We had the architect charrette presentations on Monday. We had cost estimates from the architects on Tuesday. And then during that subsequent time, I worked with Mike Lynch and Jen Charneski, Charneski, on helping pin down the soft cost components because those, those were not well-spelled out. There were, there were rough percentages in the architect presentations. I will say that, you know, Kip had been kind enough to share the architect presentations or the cost estimates from the architects from Ox Ridge. What we got from the architects this time was a fraction of the level of detail that they saw in the presentations for Ox Ridge. There were significant differences in, you know, which costs were presented where, which ones were grossly estimated using percentages. For example, the range on contingencies ranged from 5 to 10%. Small difference there. And the escalations that were utilized ranged from 8 to 10%. So, you know, some, they could create a fair amount of variation. On the other hand, the ONG estimate, ONG maintains a proprietary database of costs based on projects that they have bid. So it's, you know, recent projects that they have done or have bid on. So they, they have an up-to-date database, which is what they use to prepare their estimates. And their estimates were the most detailed by a large factor. So we leaned heavily on, on their estimates. And in speaking with Kip today, that's what the Ox Ridge team did as well because it had the most detail and we felt a little more comfortable with exactly how the numbers came up. So having said all that, we took the estimates from all, all of the architects and, and ONG. We looked at them together. One of the architect's estimates was significantly too high. It was out of the range of the other architects and ONG's estimates. So we kicked it out of the, of the peer group for analytical purposes. And to try to get as many data points as possible, I took the April 2021 Northeast Collaborative number and then I applied an escalation factor of seven and a half percent to it for two years to get it to an April 23 cost estimate, just so we could use it as a comparable in the, in the analysis process. And so that's the methodology that we went through to come up with the estimates. And I apologize, and Jack Davis actually asked me some questions today to compare, you know, our estimates versus what they had for Ox Ridge, which sent me down that path. And in, in doing so, I found a math error in the ONG sheet that we initially got from them. The, on the hard cost side of the estimate, there were, there was one category where the individual components did not add up to the number that they used as the subtotal for that section. So we got them to correct that quickly. And that's why you guys have a new set of numbers that are, are slightly lower here.
David, I don't have it on this slide. Can you just walk through what they are? So for the public in here. Just so the public in here, this is the
What the new numbers are, yeah.
Yeah, sure. The, the, the old amounts that we have been requesting were 26 million, spot 75 for Henley, 24 million, spot 50 for Holmes, and 28 million, spot 50 for Royal, for a total of 79 million, spot 75. The new estimates are slightly lower. At Henley, it's 26 million even. At Holmes, it's 24 million even. And at Royal, it's 27, spot 5. So it comes in at 77.5 million. So that's 2.25 million dollars less than the numbers that were in the initial package.
And the numbers that people are looking in here, just so they're a little clearer.
So they would be incorrect numbers?
Correct. No, no, I just want to make sure people understand, like what, what David is saying.
The numbers that you see on the slide are the old numbers.
Right.
The new numbers are slightly lower by 2.25 million. I also want to reiterate here, this is, I think Chris has a slide in the package somewhere, but these are still very preliminary drawings. There's still significant uncertainty to what the final drawings are going to be. And this is under the state requirement. These are the gross numbers, not reflecting any potential reimbursement that we may get from the state. It's very difficult to provide you with a, a, even a reasonable guess at this point at to what, as to what the reimbursement will be. There is a fixed reimbursement rate, but that gets affected by two factors. One is there's a square foot ratio that the state applies. In our case, two of the schools are going to be over that ratio. So there'll be some slight reduction in the eligible reimbursement amounts for two of the schools. And, and then there is also a concept of eligible costs. And the state determines which costs are eligible and which costs are not eligible. In the, in the Ox Ridge case, they thought that somewhere around 5% of the cost would not be eligible. I think it turned out to be slightly above that. And we don't really have a good estimate at this point, at least not one I'd want to, you know, put out there for what that, for which costs are going to be reimbursable or not. We simply know that we're getting, we, we expect to get more than zero in terms of reimbursement. And how much, I don't really want to give you a number now because I don't have any confidence in it. So.
So that's, yeah, that's the, that's, that's the punchline, the amount that on a per-school basis. The, the slide The, the slide that, that you have in front of you has a couple of appendices, mostly just history. I'm not going to go through it. Some of it, we already went over this evening. You all, everybody can, can look at that. We talked about what a charrette is, et cetera. So I guess, again, at that, with that, any questions from the board on the process that we use to arrive at those, at those estimates?
So to confirm, you, you chose KGD, right?
Oh gee, I guess I skipped that detail. I shouldn't have. Yes. Yes. We chose the firm of KGND as the, you know, as the architect for the project. As I noted, they were the firm that also did the 2016 existing condition study.
I have other questions, but, board, any questions?
No, I would just say I'm thankful that you were in tight coordination with the Ox Ridge Building Committee and all that they learned from their costing process, the architect decision, all, all of that stuff. I was part of that early on before, before they got fully started, so that's great that you can incorporate all those learnings. I'm sure, hopefully it was helpful.
It's invaluable. I mean, they essentially created a cookbook for us to follow, so.
Yeah, that's great. So, no, tremendous.
I can even say, coming on to that committee, you know, very late in the process as well, it was very easy to catch up on all, and, because their documentation is really, really strong, so.
I'd just add, you know, to Monica's comments, that, you know, the town owes you a, a great debt of thanks. It's enormous undertaking, a lot of personal hours and intellectual time spent in, in going through these ideas and concepts with great particularity, and thank you for your work.
Pleasure. Monica, you had some questions that you wanted to go through?
Yeah, I just want to go back and try to understand that the soft cost, that the differences are pretty big, and is, is it, does ONG not consider the owner's, the owner's?
No, this is, this is one of the, this is one of the areas that I had some trouble in comparing the estimates from the architects. Northeast and KGND did it a similar way. And then Perkins and Eastman and ONG did it a slightly different way, which is why you see the percentages for soft costs significantly higher for KGND and Northeast Collaborative. And basically, what happens is, I'll refer to the ONG document, I don't know if you guys have it or not, but in the ONG document, they have construction costs, and it runs down to a total of the, of the, a subtotal of the trades costs. We believe, I don't have this confirmed for certain, but I believe that the NCA and the, and the KGND numbers ran through that point, and that all of the contingencies, things that you see under contingency, construction managers' fees, et cetera, those all got lumped in to the soft cost component, and they used a percentage to estimate them as opposed to calculating more specific numbers, the way that KGND and Perkins did. So that's what we believe that the difference to be. If you look at the, the total dollar amounts, they're not dissimilar, but they are different, right?
Are they, David, are they, with your inflation hedge, the, the 10%, are they layering that on top of the owner's cost?
The, the infla, the, the escalation clause, the way that, that, that ONG does it is, they estimate escalation to date of bid, because there, every subcontractor that submits a bid puts their own estimated escalation cost into their subcontractor bid. So it only goes, only goes that far. The, the owner's contingency is separate and above that, right? So there are, there are the three elements of contingency, which would be the design, the design estimate contingency, which, you know, in our case, with the three schools in the preliminary stages, you know, could be, could be significant. And then there's the construction manager GMP consis, GMP, what is GMP?
Guaranteed maximum.
Guaranteed maximum price contingency of 3%, and then the owner's contingency on the other end.
Are those contingency percentages consistent with what the Ox Ridge project adopted? And is their experience to date suggesting that whatever they picked was adequate?
The biggest, the, the design estimate contingency is slightly higher because of the, you know, the problems with the three separate projects and, you know, the, the need to potentially move things around within the existing building. The construction manager contingency is the same, and so is the, the owner's contingency. Those are, those two are the same. The one, the biggest, the single biggest area is in the escalation area. Because, you know, the, when the Ox Ridge project was bid, it was pre-COVID, and so their escalation number, if I remember off the top of my head, is like 4.5%?
Yeah.
And our escalation number is at 8%. But, you know, ONG swears that the database that they use is based on projects that they have, you know, been involved with in recent years. So to the best of our estimate, you know, that seemed, that seems appropriate. And, and, you know, as it stands out, a large portion of the cost in these buildings is going to be to introduce air conditioning to the buildings. And getting those types of units is difficult at best at this point, and the costs are moving.
Right, but this project, you're not going to be buying air conditioning units for a while, right? You're not buying your next.
Actually, probably ordering them fairly quickly, because you're hearing things like, you're hearing things like, you know.
Lead chain.
I don't know, 24 months to get it. Really, really long lead times to get this stuff.
Yeah, one of the, one of the ideas, I'm pretty sure KGND actually had this in their conversation, which was to put together a list of those types of things as soon as possible and get them ordered, because the lead times are incredibly, incredibly.
Like getting, getting slots in, in build, in build timelines now, like, you know, reserving your time for stuff to be manufactured and fabricated now, so you have it in time.
Okay. And so going back to the drainage at Henley, so you've, you've addressed that to some degree and you've budgeted for it?
As part of the engineering and site work, yeah.
Okay. Okay, just wanted to make sure that's on the radar. I don't have any other questions.
Yeah, to give you an idea, on the, on the Henley school, the site work and improvements and upgrades estimate is $3 million. So that would include amounts for evaluating the drainage system, determining if there needs to be additional drainage capacity established on the property or, and, and evaluating how the Henley system connects to the town system on near water, just to make sure that, you know, where any issues are with flow and capacity and retention and that type of stuff, so.
Part of that's going to be, you know, studying and evaluating, right? And then determining where the problem is, right? It's not correct to assume the problem is from the school, right? It's not, we've got to figure that out.
So would you need to move that drainage if you didn't hook into the post-road? That pipe?
I believe it drains south, not north, so I don't think.
Yeah, it drains, it drains from the Henley property to near water, so it doesn't go by the, it doesn't go, it doesn't go by the post, the post.
Goes down, okay.
Yeah, I thought the question was going to be, do you need to deal with the, do you need to move the drainage regardless of the design? I think we're assuming the answer's going to be, you're going to need to address the drainage pipe and the location, yes. No, that's a lie.
There's, yeah, there's two things. One is addressing the amount, the drainage system itself, its capacity, its flow rate, those types of things. The other is the physical location of the pipe that runs from Henley property out to near water, depending on what the final design turns out to be, there's some possibility that that pipe may need to be moved slightly from the side of the building into the adjoining field. So it may need to be moved out just a little bit to make room for the physical footprint.
And again, that's why I stress the importance of doing this in conjunction with the other appropriate teams in the town, because our jurisdiction ends at the school line, right? I mean, then there may need to be improvements done off the school property.
We need, we need to make sure that the receiving system can manage the flow that would come out, right? And that may, may involve, on the Henley property, developing greater retention there so that we can limit the flow or pace the flow from the Henley property into the town side.
Okay, does anyone else have any questions? Dr. Adley?
Just wanted to mention, just as you have just published, I want to thank Carolyn, Dave, and the committee for tremendous work. But also, I wanted to let you know that there's tremendous excitement around these projects with the staff, with parents of the communities of, of these particular schools. It's just wonderful to see them come to fruition, particularly, we've continued to move things forward in the light of COVID and so on. So I just want to thank everybody for, for that vision, for continuing to support that, because it's just wonderful to see you need to come, come full circle.
Yeah, you're welcome. That's all we have in terms of presentations, so then up to you guys if you want to vote on this or not.
I think we're, does anyone have any other questions?
Make the motion.
I think we're ready to, to vote.
Yeah, again, I think it's three separate.
So it's three separate, so the first was discuss and take action on a proposal to use harbor allocation, oop, no, that's another one.
Nope.
Discuss and take action on a request for appropriation and bonding authorization for Henley Elementary School. May have a motion to approve the appropriation and bonding authorization for Henley. Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Are you unanimous? Thank you. Okay, so the next item was to discuss and take action on a request for appropriation and bonding authorization for Holmes Elementary School. May have a motion to approve the appropriation and bonding authorization for Holmes Elementary School. Marcy moves. Mike moves. Mike seconds. All in favor? Terrific, unanimous. And next item is to discuss and take action on a request for an appropriation and bonding authorization for Royal Elementary School. May have a motion to approve the appropriation and bonding authorization for Royal Elementary School. Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay.
Thanks you guys for your support.
Yeah, thank you so much.
Thank you. See you Thursday.
No, see you tomorrow night.
Do you guys have the architectural, you have the architectural specs?
The charrette.
Yeah.
We do.
Are we allowed to see them? Yeah?
Yeah, we've been trying to figure out a way to post them. We have them electronically. I think we can, Jill, is there, there's no.
Glad to see you, Brian. We can post the winning charrette. People would need to understand that they're early conceptual designs and that they're not, the committee is still working on design, so.
Yeah, might be early.
So are we permitted tomorrow night to refer the Board of Finance to this presentation on the assumption that they've watched it?
I strongly encourage people that are watching to, to share with your friends that this was a terrific presentation, and this is an opportunity to hear probably 99% of the questions that are out there. So I encourage everybody to, to use this resource. And I thank Kate for setting up the technology.
Indeed. Thank you, Kate, for saving the day.
Yes.
Will there be a counterpart to help Jill tomorrow evening?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks, you all.
Okay. Thank you for joining us. Okay, next item on the agenda is to discuss and take action on a request from the Goose Restaurant for outdoor dining on town property.
So this is, a couple months ago, we did something similar for the bodega. In your packet, you had, let's see, one picture, I thought there were two.
It's on the other side.
Okay. Basically using this similar layout to last year. There we go, there's another picture. And you also have a picture of what the, you know, what the actual, what do you call barriers look like, what the setup looks like. So basically, this is similar to what the previous board had approved last year and what you approved for the bodega. You're approving it, well, we're asking to approve that this, in your role, is the parking authority, because this is in the town parking lot.
And once, when the seasons change, it gets cold again, all this comes down, like it did this past year, it goes back to parking, so same program we had before.
I didn't see an end date on this. Is there an end date?
Um, you know, I just copied the, the one from the bodega. Do I remember that November 1st? I don't know why I think that came up. I, you know, you certainly can put an end date in there. I don't remember there being one, but.
I think it was, as weather permitting, last year.
Was it?
I don't know that we actually had an end date.
I don't know that we did.
I don't know the procedure, but I'm Doug Richman.
Hi Doug, you want to just come up and say your name, your address?
Doug Richman, 11 Outlook Drive, Darien. I, I believe, if I remember correctly, the date was November 1st, or October 31st, I think was the actual date. And, and aside from that, let me just take a step backwards. Kate, thank you so much for all your help getting us on this agenda, and thank the board for all your time. It's interesting to sit here and watch you guys at work, and you do a lot, so thank you very much. Different topic, but. We, we do want to do exactly what we did last year. The scope is exactly the same. The design is exactly the same. The cement barriers are the same. They're the same as bodegas and the same as, same project that we had last year.
Okay. Do you, do you see this, so we did it and we're doing it again because we're still sort of in COVID. Do you see this as a long-term situation?
I think if, yes and no. I think, I think if it was going to be a long-term situation, we would probably want to come back with some different thoughts on design to you for that area, which butts the CBS and goes to the dumpsters that the, that the two restaurants use in the, in Upper Crust. I, I think there should be, if it's going to be more continuing and more permanent, I think there would be design issues that, that somebody would come to P&amp;Z and then, and then do for. But it's certainly helpful, I think, from our perspective, unlike maybe a 1020, which is really, you know, a nice facility out in the back there. This is still a parking lot. So a parking lot in July and a parking lot in August, it gets a little bit different. But it certainly is a big draw in the late spring, early fall. Still gets a lot of people in, in, in July, but, so I, I think in order to keep it going, we would want to figure out how to take greater advantage of July and August. I'm not sure we can take advantage of August in this town since almost everybody's gone, but maybe July.
Okay. Any other questions? Marcy?
Sure.
Sarah? Sorry.
So I think, I, first of all, I love, I've taken advantage, I've sat in those seats, I think it's great, I think, I love that we're doing it. I know that this is town property. I think, two things. I would love for the individuals that are setting up the spaces to be mindful and not to do some creep of space. We have found some, you know, in the past year or so, you know, there were some spots initially being used last year that weren't supposed to be used. I don't know who was using them, and I know there are several restaurants over there. We just need to be mindful. That's a very busy kind of turnaround spot. And so if, if we give, you know, 10 feet, can we use the 10 feet and not the 12 or 15, I think is my only kind of point. It's, you know, there are cars and, and delivery vehicles and so forth kind of double parks, and it gets a little tricky, so I guess just be mindful of the, of the space given.
Certainly.
Any other questions? Marcy?
No, I love it. I love the outdoor dining concept, so.
Yeah, thank you.
Yes, it's wonderful. And thank you for, for coming in to talk to us.
9:30 at noon.
Waited for three hours.
Next time, bring dinner.
All good. I learned a lot. I learned a lot.
Okay, so if there are no more questions, may have a motion to approve the request from the Goose Restaurant for outdoor dining on town property. Mike moves. Sarah seconds. All in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item on the agenda is to, a, a transfer, it's to discuss and take action on a request for a transfer of $45,000 to professional services.
Right, so it's part of the preparation for potentially acquiring Great Island, we need to do some work. We need to do some. need to do some work, we need to do some evaluation of what we could actually put there, we need to do a phase one environmental study, and that means hiring professionals, and so that's what this request is, to provide the funds necessary to do this work.
Okay. Any questions?
Some choices will be environmental, that's.
And landscape architect to give us.
That's all that?
Yeah.
I got it, okay.
Design companies, water, sewer, is that all of that?
It's the ground, it's evaluating, yeah, it's doing like conditions of the grounds, it doesn't go into the buildings at this point.
Got it, okay. And we've had someone already look at the buildings briefly, or no?
Briefly, staff members.
Okay.
But we decided not to, at this point, ask for something to evaluate the buildings because what we might do in the buildings is pretty far off. So, before we do any, like, repurposing of the buildings, we would have to do some kind of testing.
Inspection or something.
Yep. This will, this phase one will include looking at, but not actually doing any invasive testing, like no boring into holes, that kind of thing.
Any other questions? Okay, may I have a motion to approve the transfer of $45,000 to professional services? Marcy moves. Sarah seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Okay. Next item on the agenda is review and approve the minutes of the May 2nd regular meeting. Are there any edits, deletions?
You lucky people, great job.
Subtractions.
Right, Patty.
Corrections, thank you, Patty. Any adjustments to the May 2nd minutes?
Not that I know of.
Nope. Okay, may I have a motion to approve minutes as presented? Sarah moves. Mike seconds, all in favor? Unanimous? Thank you. Next item on the agenda is agenda review. I just want to make a point that I, I know we talked about the community values, and frankly, I looked at the agenda today, and it wasn't on there, so that is a mistake on my part, appreciate your comments, and we will put that on for the next meeting. It fell off.
I, I think in, particularly given the length of this meeting, it's not a bad thing to have it another time when we're fresh and.
Yeah, this was a long.
Yep.
But.
My only request on that is, we've had good input to consider, and so I'd kind of like to see sort of starting point or something, track changes or whatever, so I could just see, here's where we started, and kind of here's been these additions here, so we can kind of look at that, and see where it might, might help us in deciding what we want to adopt.
That'd be, that's a great idea, we will definitely do that. Okay.
The only thing, other thing I'd be interested in hearing about is, I know that there was some ARPA funding that did go to the school systems, for bed, for mental health. I'm curious to see what they're, what they're doing at the Board of Bed with some of that funding, so that we can collaborate as we're thinking about, you know, this money that we're talking about to Silver Hill. So, I don't, I don't know who that would be to report on that, but.
Do you want to look into it?
Yeah, I could. Yeah, terrific.
Let's make one point about all this ARPA funding. We, we talk about all these initiatives, we're talking about mental health today, and what are we going to use the ARPA funding for? I'd like to suggest that people sort of disassociate ARPA funding from this investment in mental health, right? So, so we don't want to think about it simplistically, oh yes, we've got ARPA funding money, we'll just put that in and get it going. No, 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 no. Think about it with, assuming no ARPA money, that we were actually going to sit down and say, wait a minute, we have a mental health crisis, and what are we going to do to try and move the ball to solve all that? It could cost a lot less than what the ARPA grant was, it could cost, as per this discussion, vastly more than the entire ARPA grant to tackle this in a way that would be even remotely effective. So, that's why I made the comment earlier that says, before we kind of go down this path of spending ARPA money that could tie our hands in the future, saying, well, it's just the ARPA money, now you got to spend that, plus all the escalations associated with that forever with no ARPA money. Before we go down that path, I think it's very important to, to say, let's take a clear look at what problem are we trying to solve, and what are the degrees of freedom we have to do that, and how could we make a difference? And then think about the different solution levers we have. Part of it's spending ARPA money, part of it's partnering with other towns, part of it's trying to say, what are the regional and state efforts underway? Part of it's, what's the federal government going to do next? There's just a lot of moving parts to a very, very controversial subject in terms of our healthcare system, and for us to jump in with a quarter million dollars in free ARPA money and say, well, we're going to make a giant leap forward on this, I think is, is premature.
I agree. I'm curious to hear what.
Pretty dangerous in terms of making a commitment that the town is going to, would be hard for the town to unwind in the future, and then making a commitment that our residents, without a whole lot more funding, could actually end up seeing as being wholly, wholly inadequate.
Well, I, I agree with that, and I, I, you know, I think one of the problems is the number of people that'll be serviced, right?
Correct.
But I also think that, you know, there'll be some pent-up demand, and, and maybe as time goes on, that, you know, that number will fall off a little bit, right?
Maybe, but that one lady, one person in town, a single therapist who sat and rattled off at least a dozen very serious problems, from divorce to kids in crisis, we've had suicides, but we, like, recently, we've dealt with all that, and the notion that we're going to drop 250 and have capacity for one assessment, you know, per, per day, or whatever the metric was, I, I don't know, I just, I would urge everybody to say, this is a giant problem, it is intractable, it's not going away tomorrow, even if we were to spend all the money right now today, let's take a little bit of time to think this through and make sure we're making a good choice for the town.
Well, I think Mike's question is, you know, is this the proper role of government is a great question. I mean, I ask that to myself all the, all the time. I would say that this does have support from the chief of police, it does have support from Ali, it has support from our health, our health director, David, and, you know, I had a long conversation with Dr. Adley, and this, the 2-on-1 is really a service that's more dedicated towards sort of a, think of it as like a 911 for emergence, for mental emergencies, so this doesn't duplicate that service at all. So, I think it buttresses it. But I, you know, I, I agree that there are a lot of questions, and I don't, you know, I, I think it's something to consider, I think it's something to talk about, but I also would like to make a decision on it.
Well, it's a concept, and we need to think about the concept, and you, and I, I understand what John's saying, and, and you can see, you know, both sides. I mean, you could say to yourself, well, if we do the 250 for the two years, we can look at those metrics and decide if it's something that we want to try and continue to support. I mean, there is that trial aspect, you know, to it. I mean, I'll say frankly, I was troubled by some of his comments, which I took as, well, we're the only game in town, so if you're not going to do with us, what are you going to do? And my automatic reaction to something like that is, well, I'll be looking. So, but I don't want to, I don't want to be, you know, prejudicial, I understand the concept, I understand the need, the whole part of the 10 minutes of what the need is, it's like, well, we could have saved that 10 minutes, there's an extraordinary need, and I think it's just, is this something that, that we could do, is it something that we should be doing, and it's, is this the right vehicle, which are all separate, you know, questions, and we may answer all in the affirmative, and that's what I'll be thinking about.
You know, so, I don't know that he was saying you was yelling gaming town, I think that there's a well-established, there is an absolute need for help, and I think it's a matter of how can we help our Darien residents the most, right? Where do we get the most bang for the buck? And this is the first time we're investing money in that, and how are we best going to help our residents, and that's the question I think we need to answer.
But I do hear you, Mike, and I do think that it's naive to think that if we start this program, it's going to be easy to end it. You know, that, that, once you, that, that would be a really hard, hard move.
If we could just clarify for the viewing public, the 250, it's, basically, it's 250 a year. So, if New Canaan gives 250 and we give 250, they get two years' worth of this service.
Right.
Okay, so it's not like we're committing, if we commit to this, that we're committing to $500,000 now.
Right.
We're committing to 250.
Just the amount of the ARPA grant for this purpose.
Right, as Monica just said, don't think that it would be hard to unwind once you've gotten into it.
Right.
Or easy to unwind.
Well, that's, that's, again, that's why I asked that question, because this is not like buying a fire truck, right? You start this program, it's going to be hard to say, that's it, right? This, this becomes a permanent decision, we just need to take a careful look at that, that's all I'm saying.
Okay. With that, may I have a motion to adjourn? Sarah moves, Mike seconds, all in favor? Meeting adjourned, thank you, everybody.